I'd like to welcome you to the July 9, 2013, 7:00 PM regular meeting of the Brookhaven City Council. We have an invocation. Would anybody like to give the invocation? Any volunteers for the invocation? Aubrey, can I get one?
Nowhere ahead please. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings and those who are gathered here to do your work and work on behalf of the city. We ask for wisdom in our deliberation and wisdom in our decisions. In the Lord's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Aubrey. All right. If we'll all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hopefully it doesn't get too hot in here tonight. They turned the air conditioning off around 5 or 5:30. But we've got these fans going with a lot of bodies. It's could get hot. So we're gonna try to get these policemen here sworn in first so they can have their time and get on out. Are there any agenda announcements? Okay. All right, we're gonna have the policemen come on up and swear you. I need Lieutenant Linda Burke if you could come stand up here. Sergeant Tyrone Oliver, Sergeant Mike Whittle, Sergeant Eric Silvius, Sergeant Antoine Redding, Sergeant Jeff Vanaman, Sergeant Shamita Harold Jones, and Sergeant Chris Shelton. These are the newest members of Brookhaven's brand-new police department who, as you heard today, will be Yeah, y'all can, I'll do it. Yeah, it's not a lineup. Thanks Joe. I think y'all are gonna stand. Communications had a way for them to stand. If y'all can get up and direct them, Communications. But I'm going to once I finish talking about how great they are, and then I'll come down. But they'll begin, as you heard, might have heard this morning, they announced that the police department will be on patrol. First day will be July 31st. And so that's just three weeks away. We're very excited about that and we appreciate your service to our new city. And we look forward to working with you and our community and neighbors do as well. So thank you. And if you'll just read along with me when I do this oath, it'll go a lot easier. Thank you.
I state your name. You solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of and will to the best of my ability for and defend the Constitution of the United States Constitution of Georgia and the Charter, ordinances, and regulations of the City of Brookhaven. I am not the holder of any account of public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the Governor of the United States any other state or any foreign state which I follow laws of the State of Georgia and the Constitution of Georgia. I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. I will perform my duties of, I will perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the City of Brookhaven to the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. I do solemnly swear to never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. And I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. Congratulations. Thank you. Yes? Watch your step over there. Am I in the way of anybody? I was getting some city council up here to get some pictures looking as well. They're not gonna cuff you, no? I think we need to collapse those in. Can you get it that way? You have 10 more seconds.
All right. Thank you. How about a hand? I'm glad I did not fall. When you're a dancer, you have to sometimes take that risk that you might fall. If y'all bring those oaths right back up here, when y'all are done signing them, I'll sign them. And then hand them back to Susan. Is that good for you? Okay. You got them all Daniel? Just give me one second if you wouldn't mind if I focus. Shamita needed to sign hers. Oh, okay. Thank you. There you go. All right, now is the time where we have time allotted for public comment. If you would like to address old or new business on the agenda, please fill out, there's a form up here with, is it with Communications or with Daniel? With Daniel. And there's a form at the back. Just fill out your name and address. And when you come to the microphone, please speak into the mic and give us your name and the neighborhood and where you live, and what you live. And also just please remind everybody we need to maintain decorum here despite my attempted dancing. And hold all applause or any, you know, noise or cat calls. So thank you very much. And at this time, we'll begin the public comment period. Who's first? None submitted yet. All right. Hold on Aubrey, listen. How about this? If you want to speak, raise your hand. Anybody here who wants to speak about anything on the agenda besides Aubrey?
Cuff him.
There's some, looks like there's some spokes here, some citizens that might want to speak. Please don't be nervous, don't be shy. We'd like to hear from everybody and anybody who lives in the city about any of their opinions about what's going on in the City of Brookhaven. So please raise your hand if you'd like to come up. If you don't want to come up, that's fine, but please do. Don't feel afraid. You can say something nice, you can say something mean. Really like to hear from folks. All right. All right, okay, there we go. We got one. Just fill out a form, Ms. Hassan. And then Aubrey, have you filled out a form? Aubrey, why don't you go ahead and go first and give her time to fill out that form?
I'm Aubrey Belines, screen out our shambling Tucker Road. There's a passage in the Bible, the Old Testament, that said to answer a question before you hear it is folly to the person answering the question. And what I'm gonna submit to you today is, we think before you answer the question regarding the pony, you should understand the question. And so therefore, I send a serious invitation for you to come and visit the pony when it is closed to the public. Walk through, see the entire facility. We won't have any press there. We won't have any special thing there. We'll just all walk through with you, just me. Or if you want a manager to walk through, that's fine. I'll take you throughout the entire place and show you everything and answer any questions you have regarding the facility. You're gonna be making some tough decisions regarding this facility. You should know the question. You should know the question. You should know that everyone who drinks alcohol, that works for us, who comes into that facility, as they come in, they submit their keys to the management. Before they leave, they have to pass a breath test or they do not get their keys back. They have to take a cab home. I don't think many citizens of Brookhaven or many establishments can say that. We go the extra mile. But it's a serious invitation. We want you to come by as a group or individually, however you want to do it. And we'll be closed at the time you come by unless you want to come by when it's open. We won't have press. It's just me and you and walking you through and showing you every room we have in the place and having you answer every question. I will comment on one agenda item as well, and that is your amendment of the alcohol beverage section. I commend you for doing that. It simply means that you were smarter today than you were yesterday. There's nothing wrong with admitting your mistakes. I'm sure the court will look at it the same. And as we go throughout the process, we'll be pointing out more mistakes as we did in our court decision that allow you to make these changes. And I assure you, there are many, many more in state law that we have found. Thank you very much. I always enjoy you guys.
Thank you Aubrey, we appreciate it. All right. Ms. Hassan.
You can speak, it's fine. You don't have to. No, you don't have to, but it'd be nice if you did.
You just come up to the microphone. Yes ma'am. You look nice this evening.
This is a complaint. Your first complaint. My complaint
Put the microphone down if you would. Thank you.
Is that I and a lot of other people I know would like to help volunteer in the City of Brookhaven. I've talked to you, I've talked to Rebecca Chase-Williams about it. I took your advice. We submitted a resume and a bio. Submitted to the right person. No one wants us to help. Why?
All right, I can't answer questions. This is a public comment, but I will ask staff right if you, if that's what your comment is.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there are people out there with time on their hands that want to help.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Marie, as you know, we have a very strong volunteer base in the City of Brookhaven. I've been approached by many people about wanting to volunteer. And I asked, I've been asking folks recently in the last month to submit a bio or resume to Rick so that we can make sure we have screen people that make sure that they're appropriate to be volunteering for the city. And that I've assured them all that we'll have a very vigorous volunteer program because we do want to encourage volunteerism. If there's any task that needs to be done at the city, I'd like to try to open it up to volunteers first if they're qualified and see if we can utilize their services. But if you'd like to comment on that.
Yes, Mr. Stone, our HR Director, has been receiving those resumes and he has been cataloging them. There are a number of opportunities that we do see coming in the future. One will be through the Tourism Board. There's some opportunities where we would like to engage those that have the time to help us promote our hotels in the community and special events. Some of the special events, you know, there are needs for volunteers. And so that will be one venue. Another is, once we take over the park system for the city, there will be opportunities there to help us promote the individual parks through our Parks Director. I would ask that the public just be a little bit more patient because we're trying to develop what those volunteer positions are and have a job description that goes with them. And to be able to utilize their talents and their time at the highest level of efficiency. We just don't want to bring somebody on and not give them something to do that could not be worth their time. So we do want to be particular about what we make available to them. But if they could be patient, we are working on that.
If we have somebody with sufficient qualifications in that pool that we've already built, we have a volunteer coordinator who works, you know, part-time.
Jim, could you put the mic up a little bit and speak right into it?
Is there an opportunity going through the list of volunteers we have? Is there somebody that's willing to step up as a volunteer coordinator? There'd be sort of a point person for, you know, beginning to organize that. I know staff is busy with other things. But if we've got volunteers that are qualified, who have some professional experience, you know, in certain areas, let's pick one or two of them and let them begin to organize what the opportunities are. So, you know, I had somebody mention that they would be willing, once we acquired the parks, to coordinate Boy Scout Eagle projects and Girl Scout Silver, I think it's Silver Award projects in the parks, you know. But I said, well, let's wait till we, you know, get the parks. But if we could have somebody who would be a point person and that, I don't know that they necessarily have to be paid staff, they could be a volunteer if they're willing to take that responsibility.
Absolutely. We can definitely take a look at that. We also want to be sure that when somebody is even volunteering, whether they're a paid employee or they're a volunteer, that they're working on behalf of the city for a city initiative, you know, that they are protected. I mean, they're just treated like an employee too. So we have to be sure that if they get injured or something happens, that we have the coverage to make sure that they are taken care of. So, you know, those are some things that we're also looking at. And again, you know, the Parks Program is one supreme opportunity as well as the Tourism Board. And we're just trying to get those better organized so that we can reach out. The idea of having a volunteer coordinator of the volunteers is a good one. And we would like to pursue that. And we do have some very qualified candidates. We just want to be sure that we're we're making use of the talents that they have. And we don't want to abuse that. We certainly want to give them something that they can see an end deliverable that they have contributed, which I know is what they want to do, so that we give them a task. So we could be patient just for another, maybe four to six more weeks. We can have many of those things available.
So basically, what it is, is the departments that would be most, the best fit for volunteers aren't really up and running completely yet. Like she said, parks and the Tourism and Convention Visitors Bureau, even the Police Department. I know they're gonna, they're gonna have a volunteer program as well. So those three departments are areas where volunteers fit best. And once we get those up and running, believe me, we're gonna utilize our volunteers. Because we have a huge talent base in Brookhaven. I look forward to using, I look forward to volunteering and working with the folks that I volunteered with before, like yourself. And believe me, we'll have a space for anybody that wants to volunteer. And I know there's a spot for you. And you might be a good volunteer coordinator.
I've heard doing the boat racks at Silver Lake, that's enough coordination.
All right, well, thank you. Yes, yes sir, come on down. Just give that to Daniel right up front there.
Thank you, I'm Joe Vierum. I live at Lennox Cove Circle, right up Curtis Drive, here about a half mile away. My main point is not this, but as a resident nearby the Pink Pony, I gotta say I don't have any problems with them. I understand the problems with precedents and the legal issues involved. But as a nearby resident, I don't have any problem with them. I'd like to see us leave them alone rather than take on a prolonged battle. But I defer to the legalities of precedents. Well, thank you, Joe Gebbia, for being so responsive to my request. And Max Davis, I don't deal with the rest of you. I just came up here because I sometimes sit in situations like yours and nobody says anything. I appreciate what you're doing. I don't believe anything that the anonymous phone callers tell me, and I'm really irritated about that. And then I wish there was something we could do about those people taking responsibility for what they say. I appreciate your actions on the tax work that you're doing. I like the direction of the city and I like the tone of what you're doing. I wish there were more of us here. And as soon as I say that, I think, you know, I don't know that I can say it for the whole meeting. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you. Next, anybody else? All right. The public comment section is closed. I think there'll be another opportunity towards the end for more public comment. All right. Let's go on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on the consent agenda are a number of meeting minutes, beginning with June 11, 2013, City Council Work Session, the City Council Regular Meeting for June 11, 2013, the public hearing June 17, and the special called City Council Meeting of June 17.
All right. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move that we approve four items on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, sitting across the by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Madam clerk, please enter the minutes that has passed. Announcements? Are there any announcements? All right, reports and presentations? Yes? All right, I said at the beginning, but I'll say it again, July 31, our police department will be up and running. And we're looking at having a ceremony that we want to invite everybody to. We're not certain on the location yet. There's a couple spots. We might, the fallback location is right here at the Municipal Court. But we're trying to get it more towards the middle of the city. So we'll look forward to some news on that the next week or so. Okay, any more announcements? Okay. Any reports and presentations? No reports and presentations? All right, we're down to J already on the agenda. That's pretty good for us. Old business.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, your first item is an action item for deliberation of the millage rate. As you will recall, you've already held four public hearings discussing the availability of the tax revenues and other anticipated revenues and to enable you to set the millage rate for 2013.
All right. So do we go to the ordinance? We deliberate on the millage rates more. Do you want to talk about it some more?
If your council so desires.
Okay. If anybody want to talk about the millage rate? Well, I think this is, it says deliberation here on the agenda. So we need to just, if there's any discussion on it, go ahead and discuss it now, then you can make a motion.
Well, we've had a lot of discussion over the last four hearings and certainly yesterday. And our Finance Director Bonnie Klein has been meeting with us and has made multiple presentations here. Yesterday, we proposed, at least talked about, had on the table a millage rate of 2.85, which is quite a bit down from the maximum rate of 3.35 that our charter allows us. I do want to correct that misinformation because I keep getting calls saying, I hear you're gonna set the maximum amount. And that's not true. We're really about a half mil below that. So it's, what we're talking about is 2.85. I would agree, you know, I told, I told you yesterday, I kind of wanted to sleep on it because this is our first millage rate. As we've explained, there's a lot of unknowns and uncertainties. Setting our first millage rate without having historical information is a bit daunting. We've got good estimates. And we're anticipating some certain funds to come in, but there are some unknowns. So we want to proceed cautiously. I think you all know that, all of us are fiscal conservatives. We're striving very hard to produce the lowest tax rate possible. I would point out that this proposed 2.85 is a good two mils lower than the county unincorporated, what would have been the city rate of 4.96. I think that's gonna be a big boon to not only all of our residents, but it's gonna be especially good news to commercial properties, businesses. And, you know, we sometimes forget the apartment owners who don't get a host credit. But a good portion of our residents do live in apartments. And of course, they pass on tax rates to their residents. So for them, it's more than a two mil cut in what they would have been paying. So I think that's, I think that's a very positive thing. What I had to sleep on was whether we had enough reserves or not. I think it's only fiscally prudent to have a rainy day fund. I think because we have so many unknowns, it's been a little difficult to know exactly how much that is. I guess this morning I woke up and said, I think, I think we're okay. I think the revenues look pretty good coming in. They actually look quite good coming in. So I feel like we will have enough of a cushion. And so I would tell you, I would share with my fellow council members that I'm comfortable with the 2.85.
Joe?
I yield to Jim right now. We'll go in strict order. How about that?
All right, okay. Jim?
You know, having suggested the 2.85 yesterday, I'll say again, I think that it does provide, it covers the budget that the mayor proposed. Although it is a tax increase over the net payment, I think that it's prudent. It does provide us, it covers our expenses. And with the anticipated revenue increase that we're seeing now, we understand from our Finance Director that some of the revenue we anticipate from DeKalb is gonna come in higher than we originally budgeted back in the, in the spring. I think the 2.85 gives us sufficient room to cover our costs. But also with the increase, we will have some reserves built in that if we are prudent, as I expect we are and will be, that we'll have some money to set aside for reserves when we start looking at our mid-year budget adjustment later this year. But I think at this time, the 2.85 is, I believe, a good number. And I think it's the number that we need to stick with.
Joe?
Well, the conversation is about struggle, and we did struggle very, very hard with this. We were all on the same page. And I want to thank Jim for taking the charge, challenging us at our original 2.95 to 2.85. It's like we going down in a windstorm. I mean, it was pretty easy to convince us. Just for those of you who have been, who maybe have not been following this, some of the numbers are. This is a .5 mil decrease. It represents a 15% decrease off of the 3.35 max that we were permitted to do, according to Charter. The dollar difference versus the 3.35 was $952,125. Our charge is to cover costs. So we're looking at a $5.4 million amount that we were looking to cover. At the 2.85, estimated generated revenues were $5,427,000. That means that we were 27,000 over what our estimate was for what we were trying to achieve. That's one half of 1%. We did not leave a lot of margin. We went as far as we could go in good prudence and good judgment to make sure that we were reflecting and passing on the maximum amount of discount that we could to our residents. And I'm pleased with this.
All right, I guess I'll go last. And then we'll move on to the vote. This is probably going to be the last comment I want to make about this from the stand during a council meeting about this millage rate. I was on vacation last week in Sarasota. And I started getting calls from folks who were scared. Getting anonymous robo-call, that was mentioned earlier by the gentleman, that I was raising taxes and I wanted to raise taxes and we're gonna set the millage rate at the max. All sorts of things. There've been mailings put out by anonymous groups claiming they were raising taxes. Again, untrue. Just to give folks a history so that everybody understands where we're coming from. I know there's a difference of opinion on some of this, but from my standpoint, from where I am as the mayor and for what I worked on to help build this city, the history behind our millage cap is as follows. When the Charter was drafted last spring, winter, and passed up legislature, a millage rate cap of 3.35 mils was put into the Charter. And there was a reason for that. Because DeKalb County's millage rate at the time for the unincorporated tax district and the police line item was a total of 6.39 mils. That's what DeKalb was charging you on your tax bill at that time, February, March of last year. All the way up until July of last year, it was 6.39 mils. That 6.39 mils for the property tax portion of your taxes that you pay was what goes to cities to cover those services like police and other services. That's what the county allocated. For the police line item, I think it was four mils, four something mils. And the unincorporated tax district was two something mils. So when the 3.35 figure was put into the Charter, that was about half, the Charter, that was about half of what DeKalb was charging. But it came to that rate because when you figured the host credit in, 3.35 mils represented a figure that for most figured the host credit in, 3.35 mils represented a figure that for most taxpayers in Brookhaven, even with franchise fees, represented either paying the same to DeKalb County or paying slightly less to DeKalb County. That's a fact that's not disputed, that that's the 3.35 millage rate, the math doesn't lie, that's what it represented. So, two weeks before the referendum in July, and this is my opinion, and it's backed up by facts, DeKalb County took money out of the line item that went to, just to people going in cities, for the governments to spend in cities. They took, they shifted a little over two mils from the police line item, which is what cities used to pay for their police department, and put it into the county general operating budget. So, what DeKalb County effectively did was raise taxes on people's living, only people living in cities, in July of last year, so that the county could claim, if you live in a city in DeKalb County, you pay more taxes than you do if you're an unincorporated DeKalb. That was the reason for the shift, but it was a shell game. It wasn't, didn't do anything other than take funds away from cities and put them in the general operating fund, which DeKalb County, however your opinion is, I say they would waste it, but that's what happened. It was a political maneuver that's not going to last, and we've already heard this year that DeKalb County is going to have to put some of that money back in. So, the time that they're saying that they don't have enough money for police and not enough policemen, they're trying to charge us $525,000 a month for police services, they took money out of the police line item, because I guess they were so awash with cash, they didn't need it to go in there. No, they did, it was an irresponsible move, and it was political in nature. So, that being said, what I campaigned on, and what I believe in, and what this city's going to accomplish, is that eventually you will be paying less taxes in the city of Brookhaven than you will be paying in DeKalb County. And I think we're all, even, and I know Bates, I can speak for him, we're all committed to that goal, that if you live in the city of Brookhaven, you're going to get better services, and you're going to end up paying less in taxes. I don't know how much less, but we're going to do that, because DeKalb County is going to have to put that money back in the police budget, because they wiped out the reserve. They can't keep going on with a low millage rate for police. They've already put some back, they put a half a mil back, or they're going to put a half a mil back from what we hear, next year they'll probably put another mil or mil and a half back. So, all this talk about us raising taxes is dishonest talk, because you have to know the context and what really happened with the millage rate, and I hope people understand that, they need to do their research and understand where we're coming from. We are all on the same page, some of us were against the city, some of us were for it, some of you were against the city, some of you were for it, we're all together now, we're all going to have a well-run, efficient city. If we maintain this council up here, the way things are going, I'm very confident that in next year, and the year after, and the year after that, you're going to see a big difference in services and your taxes. So, the 2.85 millage rate, which is a half mil below our cap, which is the maximum that we can charge, I think it's lean, it's efficient, it's a good start, hopefully we can go down lower next year, because I don't want to leave a lot of money, extra money laying around a government for it to spend. Jim mentioned that yesterday, I've mentioned that from the beginning. I don't think we should spend as much or charge as much as we can. I think that you, the taxpayers, need to keep more money in your pockets, because you know what's best, how best to spend it. We'll take what we need, we'll assess what we need to run our city efficiently and to provide you good services, and all we ask for you is some understanding and support, and I think we've been getting that a lot lately, we appreciate that. But we want to make sure everybody's voices are heard, we're going to have another public comment section at the end of this, but that's the last time I'm going to address that issue in this manner from this stage, because it's over and done with, we're going to move forward from here, and I hope we all move forward together. So, thank you very much. All right, now we'll go to the ordinance, number two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, ordinance 2013-07-11, approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia, to fix the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Brookhaven for the fiscal year 2013 and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion on the floor?
I move we approve ordinance 2013-05-01, ordinance, excuse me, I'm sorry, I was reading that, 2013-07-11, approval of an ordinance, mayor and council, to fix the ad valorem tax for the city of Brookhaven for the fiscal year 2013 for other purposes at 2.85 mils. In addition, I'd like to offer, I'd like to suggest, or I'd like to propose that we direct staff to work with our legislative representative to explore ways to further reduce the tax burden on our homestead properties in the city of Brookhaven, looking at opportunities that are used in other jurisdictions, either increasing the homestead exemption or decreasing the millage rate for homestead properties, so that in later years, we have additional opportunities to further reduce the tax burden on those homestead properties within the city.
All right, is there a second?
I would second the motion, and in an effort to provide the superior services that I think the vision of our city calls for in a fiscally conservative way, that, where we promise to be really good stewards of this money, I too would second this motion to set our millage rate at 2.85.
Susan?
Any discussion?
Yes, Susan, Bates wants to be the third to say, he's watching right now.
Oh, hey Bates.
And I want to be the fourth on that.
Thank you, all right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor of adopting the ordinance as stated by Councilman I, or signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please enter the minutes that this ordinance has passed. Number three?
Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance, 2013-05-01, an ordinance that the city charter, the city, the charter of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia shall be amended so that upon proper passage section, section 2-15, ordinance form procedure shall be revised. This is the second reading. I do want to mention this, as you consider this, we are required to have consecutive action, council meeting, consecutive action through consecutive council meetings on a matter of amending the charter. As you will recall, the June 25, City Council meeting, regular scheduled council meeting was canceled due to the Georgia Municipal Association meeting. You did hear this in early, your first meeting in June, so therefore, you will have to hear this a second time, so that will be on your next scheduled agenda for July 23, regular scheduled meeting. So, tonight, you will act on this for the second time, but it cannot be formally adopted as a second read at this point.
All right.
So, do we need to pass a new motion?
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we pass ordinance 2013-05-01, an ordinance that the charter of the city of Brookhaven shall be amended so upon proper passage, section 2-15, ordinance form procedure shall be revised.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance as stated by Councilwoman Williams, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please enter the minutes. Number four?
Number four and number five, if I may, as consideration by the mayor and council to defer this, these are the intergovernmental agreements, both for police services and parks and recreation. I'm unhappy to state that we have not yet received a response to our offer to the county for cost for these services. Hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll be able to act on this, but as of this time, we have not received any response.
Okay, is there a motion for deferral of items four and five?
I will move to defer considerations of four and five. Wish I could say something harsh in that we could pass on to DeKalb County, how disappointed I am.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
The city manager, do you want to review the bidding at all?
I'm happy to report that...
Just for the information of our audience here?
As you know, we have been negotiating with DeKalb County for the cost for an intergovernmental agreement, both for police and fire, recreation services. We've gone back and forth over numbers, and we did offer a counter to their recent counter, and our proposal and offer is a combined amount of dollars for both services of police and parks and rec at $3.1 million, with the understanding that instead of the city taking over the parks November 30 of this year, we will take them over the day after Labor Day, and that they can keep all fees that they've collected for purposes of parks and recreation, be that program service fees, rental fees, any kind of fees that are associated for signing up for swing lessons or anything of the sort. That offer was transmitted yesterday, and it was based on a counter offer that we received from them last week, and we were hopeful that we would have information today, but unfortunately, we have not gotten a response back from them yet. We think this is a very fair offer. We've been in consultation with our police chief as to what, in his estimation and professional opinion, for the services that are being rendered to the city, what they should actually cost. We took that figure in an effort of cooperation, we increased that amount, and then took the amount of what we were considering and discussing with the county on parks and rec, and came up with a $3.1 million figure.
Oh, go ahead.
And is it correct that we have asked DeKalb County repeatedly for an accounting of exactly what we're getting for this $18,000 a day that they were asking for?
Yes, we did, in fact, three weeks ago, the mayor and myself attended a meeting with the CEO and with the county manager, whereby, you know, we asked for that again, and in the end of the meeting, we were told, when we offered an amount to them, which was very close to this dollar amount that I've just sounded into the record, that they would consider it, and that they would meet, the county manager would get back and meet with me to discuss the figure further, and in that meeting, he was to bring the DeKalb County figures that supported their dollar amount. I did ask for that at the beginning of our meeting, and he said he did not have it and did not bring it.
And have we made a further request?
Yes, we have, we've requested even further information now, all costs associated with both of these services, including timesheets identifying who the persons are, their salary amount, all fees collected for parks and recreation. We've sent that, our communications director prepared that yesterday, and we're waiting for that information to be surrendered to us.
Yeah, there's been some news about this issue as well. You know, when DeKalb County came up with a figure that we should be paying $525,000 a month for police services, my jaw dropped. It had been repeatedly deferred on our agenda, telling DeKalb County that that wasn't acceptable, that $525,000 a month for the services that we've been receiving, I'm not disparaging DeKalb County officers, because they do a fine job, and we, actually, matter of fact, we've hired some DeKalb officers for our police department. But, when you get the higher ups and you get to the bureaucracy, I'm not sure that DeKalb County allocates its resources well in this area. So, it's my duty, and it's our duty as a council, to protect the interests of Brookhaven taxpayers, and having Brookhaven taxpayers pay $525,000 a month for police services from DeKalb County, at a time when they cut the police line item just this last summer, at a time where we, I know you, many of you have talked to me about, you know, receiving fewer patrols and more crime in some areas, maybe some of that's anecdotal, maybe some of it's not, but I think we've noticed a pullback in service. To pay more at this time, to me, was unconscionable, and so, we, like Marie said, I think we've made a very fair offer of $3.1 million. You ought to call DeKalb County and tell them to take the, take the, take the offer, because if you're a parks person in particular, that means we get to take our parks over, you know, in September, and I think that's something that the parks folks will be really excited about. We can get our parks taken over earlier, we get this moved past us and have a good relationship with DeKalb County from this point forward, I think we have a good relationship with them now, it's just a difference of opinion, and I, as your mayor, feel a responsibility to negotiate on your behalf and on my behalf, because I'm a taxpayer too, to make sure that we pay a fair price for the services we're receiving from DeKalb County. And I want to thank Marie and the staff for having worked on this, I want to thank the council for their patience when it comes to this. Hopefully, we'll have a resolution soon, but I'm not going to let Brookhaven be raked over the coals when it comes to costs for police services and for parks. So, that's what that's about, and we appreciate your continued patience and the support I've been hearing from folks about this as well. Joe?
Yeah, we're all a little bit annoyed here, you can probably tell. Marie, I'm going to make a couple statements, if I'm out of line with any of my statements, correct me, okay? First of all, DeKalb County does not have a stellar reputation when it comes to how they've dealt with cities previously. It looked like they were going to get a reshaping here, when how they were dealing with us, and things were looking good, but apparently, really hasn't come across as, as well as it should have, as well as it could have. We still have a vested interest with them, and they have a vested interest in us, and we need to resolve this amicably. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the first offer that they posed to us for police was $800,000?
$846,000 a month.
$846,000 a month, well, you can regard that as a shout over the bow.
That's about $34,000 a day, something like that, $30,000.
Obviously, starting off with their old schemes. Then it came down to $525,000 a month, and then, as any prudent city would do, you requested an itemized list of expenses...
For what we get for that?
For what we were getting, or what we actually got, and they promised that to you, and they have not delivered it. And yet, they had the nerve to send us a letter saying that we were not making payment to them. Now, did you not make an offer to them of $500,000?
I made two offers to them, I had the Finance Director cut two checks, one of which was $500,000, the second one for police, and one of which was $137,500...
Which was a down payment at their request, that was something the CEO asked, it was a good faith payment.
Right.
We did that.
And then, what was the outcome of that?
They were rejected.
On what ground?
Did not want to accept.
No logic there.
All right, well, I'm running out of patience, I have to tell you. You got a tough job, I appreciate what you're doing. But, please, you need to convey to them our feeling, and it's not warm and fuzzy, I can tell you that.
I'll be happy to convey that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add that I can't imagine the frustration of, as you probably know, the average stay in the CEO's office is fairly short, and so, we've had revolving negotiating partners as well. So, we've started off with one team, and that sense gone, promises that they made were then wiped off the table, and so, it's like every time we come back, it's a new negotiating partner and a new set of, new set of demands and rules, so that's added to our frustration as well, and I'm quite saddened and dismayed at what's going on with the CEO's office right now. We're not sure who, who we're going to be talking to tomorrow, or who's going to be in charge, and I agree for our county over that, but I'm sorry, we're kind of caught in this bind right now.
Thank you, all right. So, we've got a motion on the table, we've had discussion, is there, all in favor of adopting the deferral of items four and five, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please enter the minutes, these four and five have been deferred. Number six, last one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2013-06-06, consideration and approval of a resolution providing for the establishment of stormwater service fee rates and credits to the stormwater service fee. You have a resolution before you, and in that resolution, we have suggested an amount of $60 a year, the county is considering that as well. Currently, it is $48 a year for the stormwater utility, $4 a month, and going to $5 a month. We were hopeful today in the county commission meeting that the county would have acted on this, it has been on several of their agendas and deferred each time to increase the rate. We do have, as I said, the resolution before you that includes the $5 per month. If you feel uncertain to move forward with that, then we would ask at least that you retain the current rate of the $4 per month, or $48 a year.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
I'm going to move that we adopt this resolution, RES 2013-06-06, with the increase up from $4 to $5 a month. I know that's not popular, but if you could, I, in fact, I encourage you to pull up on the Agenda Packet online, the report of the assessment of our stormwater system. It will raise the hair on your head. We have a system, an aging system, and as some people call it, this is the big scary, because all of these sewer systems and culverts and system are out of sight, they're underground, but God help you if they collapse or they fail. And we're fortunate that DeKalb has at least done a preliminary evaluation, and hundreds of these pipes and culverts and systems are on the high priority list. We can't even begin to start repairing them, even at this higher level, we're talking about an eight-year backlog just to hit the high priority items. You know, I'm discouraged that DeKalb has punted on this issue for months now, they punted for years. They've punted for years. They've underfunded this. That's why we're in the system, that's why we're in the situation we are now. So I would move that, I think DeKalb is going to go ahead and raise it anyway. It's a dollar a month.
Didn't Richard report that earlier? The subcommittee had raised the rate already. They voted to raise the rate.
They have, they have. Our sister city up in Dunwoody has already raised theirs to $69 a year because they sent cameras down their systems and had a pretty shocking story to tell as well and have already replaced some major systems that were really at the point of failing. So with that, I'm going to suck it up and say let's pass it.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, discussion?
I think Rebecca pretty much hit it straight on. The ball was being punted and now we have to pick it up and run with it. This is an infrastructure situation and...
It's also a life safety.
It's a life, well, yeah, it's life safety, it's infrastructure, it's something that is of immense importance, immense importance. And we've got the list of the state of the system right now and there are problems. And as Rebecca pointed, if we pointed out, if we continue at the current, at our available current rate, we're looking at multi-years to address significant number of high priority issues that have to be addressed. So I am in favor of the rate of $60. We, as a council, are always trying to structure ourselves to be equal to or below where DeKalb is. On this particular issue of this importance, I think at minimumly being where DeKalb is is prudent.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask for a point of clarification, just to be sure, I'm confident it was included, but I wanted to just be sure. You will recall that in our work session, Mr. Meehan did address a typo that was in the ordinance and that's under the calculation component for multifamily and it's listed currently as .7 and it needs to be .5.
Yes, and Rebecca, if you want to just quickly amend your motion to include...
Yes, I will amend my motion to include the correction of the typo.
From .7 to .5.
From .7 to .5.
Is that proper, the way we just did that?
That's fine, as long as there's a second.
And I'll back it up with my second.
Second about her amendment to her motion?
Second on Rebecca's amendment.
And I would agree with Jim's earlier comment that we should continue to look at that to make sure that there's equity for commercial and multifamily units on the way we charge for stormwater.
We'll address that when we address the plan, the stormwater utility plan and take a look at how that's calculated, especially for mixtures of uses.
I also hope that now that we've passed this ordinance and we've increased the fee, that we show some very timely response. I know that we get calls on a very regular basis about problems with stormwater. I think that we need to look less at analyzing and more at action. And hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be able to begin replacing some of the very critical culverts that we have so that we can point to some real solutions rather than real problems going forward. But, you know, at this point, I agree we do need the money, but I also agree more that we need action at this point and we've got information. Let's not sit on it, let's get to work and begin replacing things that we feel are dire needs by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think our public works department has shown a stellar example of being action-oriented, so I'm not really worried about them not taking action. So, you know, I have it in my neighborhood. When you, you know, especially during these rains, you've seen the condition of our stormwater system when you drive down the street, it might be a little bit lower at the bottom of the valley and the street is flooded right at where the drain tops are. I don't know if it's because of the volume of water, but I know some of it's because of the debris in the storm system. And we've had a lot of analysis from DeKalb lately, but over the years, we hadn't had a lot of action, to your point, Jim. So it is aging and when Dunwoody assessed theirs, they found horrible problems. They assessed theirs at $69 for a reason. Ours would be less than that, but equal to what we believe DeKalb's will be. And hopefully we'll be much better stewards of our stormwater system and much better stewards of the money that goes into the stormwater system so that when people drive down the streets of Brookhaven next year in the gully washers, they'll start seeing some improvement. So I'm confident in our public works department in taking on that task. So thank you.
You know, during this last rain, I don't know about you all, but I got a number of emails that people sent me pictures of, you know, cracks in pavement and broken curbs where water was either going under the road and sinkholes were forming and, you know, with the amount of rain we've had, it builds up. I would also just point out too, that the, this is an enterprise fund that collects this money that has for years in DeKalb County, but when, but of course, as you would expect when we've gone to them to say, well, how much is in the account, of course, there's nothing. So we're starting at ground zero.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance as amended and stated by Councilman Williams, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam clerk, please enter the minutes that the resolution has passed. New business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before we get to new business, I would ask consideration of the council to amend the agenda under item O, executive session, to call that first before we move on to new business.
Okay. How long do we estimate this?
Fifteen to no more than 20 minutes.
Okay, folks.
Stick around, we won't be long.
We, well, we got to do that first, but just want to explain to folks, we got to go into executive session quickly. It's just about eight o'clock right now. We hope you'll be back by 8:15, 8:20 at the latest. So please stick around because there is some more public comment period here and we only have one ordinance to adopt, so it'll be meeting the last maybe 15, 20 minutes after we come back, maybe 30. So we appreciate you coming and is there a motion for executive session?
I move we amend the agenda and move to executive session.
I'll second.
For one litigation, one litigation, madam.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor of executive session, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll be back in just a few minutes. Thank you. Excuse me, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll move to come out of executive session, please.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of discussion? All in favor of adjourning executive session, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're out of executive session. Back to the last item on the agenda, the last ordinance item. This is on, okay, new business. Is there a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burkhold is here.
All right, Mr. Burkhold, come on up.
This ordinance is amending the chapter of our alcohol ordinance. It has nothing to do with the hours of operation, so just to make sure that it's a separate issue completely. It's not what this is about tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and just sound in to the record the ordinance number. Ordinance 2013-06-09 and ordinance to amend chapter four, alcoholic beverages of the code of the city of Brookhaven by amending section 4-1, section 4-49, section 4-50, section 4-51, subsection 4-101.1, paragraph A, section 4-104, and by deleting subsection 4-102, paragraph C, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, provide for the, an adoption and effective date, to provide for complication and to provide for other lawful purposes. This is a second read.
Okay, and I think Mr. Schultheis is pulling up the presentation, so we'll take that out in just a second. It's one of the concerns when you do AV stuff in advance, things go into hibernation or...
I thought it might be a password problem, Daniel.
Good thinking on that.
Let me do this, just in case. It's coming up, but I do have paper copies of the presentation for each council member. As Ms. Garrett said, this is an amendment to the alcohol code that's been prepared. This is something that was addressed previously on first reading and what I'm going to do tonight is make a presentation regarding, a legal presentation regarding the negative secondary effects relative to this issue. There are a number of changes in the alcohol code. This is mainly a cleanup. I think you've been told on numerous occasions in the past that what you inherited...
Did you push the microphone up a little bit?
That what you inherited from DeKalb County was problematic and not as clear as it should be. And so we have improved it and streamlined it. We've deleted a number of sections that were not necessary and that's what this is for you tonight. The cornerstone of regulating, and a lot of these presentation notes go towards alcohol in the context of adult entertainment because that's one of the regulations that's an issue in this ordinance. And we've addressed the types of conduct that can go on alcohol premises. Of course, sexually oriented businesses are prohibited from having alcohol under the sexually oriented business ordinance, but we're dealing with alcohol establishments, what type of live conduct can occur on those premises. And there are regulations prohibiting, for example, nudity on the premises and certain types of physical conduct on the premises of liquor establishments. And you can regulate based on the negative secondary effects of adult businesses. The cornerstone case that you're familiar with is Renton versus Playtime Theaters. You've heard about that for several months, but it is a standard that is still applicable in the law today. And I want to actually make mention on the record of a case that was decided today by the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit. This is a case called Entertainment Productions Incorporated versus Shelby County, Tennessee. That's where Memphis is. This involves an ordinance that I worked with Shelby County on and in upholding the prescription on adult entertainment or on alcohol in sexually oriented businesses, the court said, "It seems almost too obvious to say that the combination of intoxicating beverages and erotic entertainment can be extremely volatile and that banning the consumption of alcohol at adult oriented businesses may reduce a variety of secondary effects. This common sense observation is supported by the findings contained in the Duncan Associates' report," which is, that's a national land use planning firm, "which uncovered instances of patrons drinking to the point of total inebriation, coupled with numerous violations of state and local laws prescribing customer patron sexual contact. The report further suggested that the combination of drinking and sexual stimulation increases the risk of patrons becoming targets for crime as these individuals are likely to have their guard down. This conclusion is in some sense too narrow in that it does not take into account the increased risk that the intoxicated sexually stimulated patrons may themselves engage in criminal activity, activity e.g. soliciting performers for sex, exposing themselves in public and like crimes." Those aren't my words, those are the words of the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit, upholding the regulation like those before you. Courts have recognized many different types of secondary effects, you've seen these before, but they include negative impacts on surrounding properties as well as crimes, public indecency, lewdness, illicit drug use and trafficking, as well as litter and other aesthetic impacts. The courts have looked at these sources of evidence in considering the types of secondary effects. They've looked at land use reports, crime impact reports, other judicial decisions, expert reports and anecdotal data. Why is this broad panoply important? Well, the Sixth Circuit hit the nail on the head today in their published opinion. They said, you know, the experts for the plaintiffs, they challenge a lot of these studies and meta-studies, but we can uphold this based on common sense and just basic observations of illicit activity on the premises of alcohol serving establishments. So you don't have to have all these different kinds. The fact that U.S. Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit said there's no strict requirement of any actual empirical scientific data, you just have to have any evidence reasonably believed to be relevant under the Renton standard. That's the legislative rationale that physical contact between patrons and employees of alcoholic beverage establishments, including bed dances, couch dances and lap dances, as they are commonly called, are associated with and can lead to illicit sexual activities, masturbation for hire, lewdness and prostitution. This language is very similar to the decision that came down in the Daytona Beach case we argued at the Eleventh Circuit here in Atlanta called Daytona Grand versus City of Daytona Beach. The city council in Daytona Beach made a very similar finding in their alcohol ordinance and it was upheld based on ample evidence of such secondary effects. The negative secondary effects justify these types of regulations in alcohol establishments. The Flanagan Enterprises versus Fulton County case is probably the most local one, but that's also upholding the Fulton County ordinance. Daytona Grand is the case I just mentioned. I also mentioned the Peekaboo Lounge case that we argued at the Eleventh Circuit in 2011. Actually, I think I argued that in 2010, it was decided in 2011. And then we have Artistic Entertainment versus Warner Robins, Georgia. Again, this is not new ground, but there are a number of cases that upheld very similar regulations. Whether it was a prescription on alcohol at sexually oriented businesses or what this is is sort of a flip side of that same coin and that it's a prescription on nudity in liquor license establishments. Going back to 1981, the Supreme Court of the United States countenance a legislative finding by the New York Legislature, that common sense indicates that any form of nudity coupled with alcohol in a public behavior begets undesirable behavior. And then we've looked at this language from the Eleventh Circuit in the Fulton County case previously, but it's equally applicable to this ordinance. Daytona Grand involved a challenge to legislative rationale for these types of rules in the alcohol code and the Eleventh Circuit rejected those because they did nothing to undermine the city's evidence that nudity in these establishments includes lewd activities, prostitution, the VIP rooms and the like. More recently, there's a case from the Supreme Court of Missouri that upheld similar rules but said that the reasons that people go to these establishments is for paid sexual contact oftentimes and the restrictions don't actually have any restriction on the speech itself. The erotic dancing can continue, but it eliminates the conditions like alcohol consumption that give rise to secondary effects. Today's decision from the Sixth Circuit relied heavily on this case that we argued for Knox County, Tennessee called Richland Bookmark, where they found more than ample evidence to support the regulations. In your legislative record, it's been, you know, a long time since you looked at this the first time in December of 2012, but you remember there are 45 separate documents comprising over 3,000 pages. They range from cities large and small. They include affidavits from Atlanta area businesses, including the Pink Pony South and Crazy Horse Saloon. Those are both in the city of Forest Park. I'm going to submit it, or actually I've already submitted to Ms. Hyatt to make a part of the record, a decision that was rendered last Monday, July 1st, 2013, by the Georgia Court of Appeals. This is a published decision by the Georgia Court of Appeals, it'll be published in the official reporters. And basically, this was a challenge by the landowners in the city of Forest Park to the city's new ordinances that were passed in 2009 prescribing alcohol. The businesses argued and the landowners argued, well, these businesses had alcohol for years and yes, you didn't renew their licenses, yes, you found illegal activity on the premises, but the fact of the matter is, they had a vested right. They had a lawful non-conforming use and your ordinance constitutes a regulatory taking or an inverse condemnation. The trial court granted summary judgment to the city of Forest Park. The Georgia Court of Appeals affirmed that grant of summary judgment, saying, "There's no need for a trial, this is not inverse condemnation, this is not a regulatory taking, there's no constitutional violation." And in doing so, they cited the Gold Rush II versus City of Marietta case from the Georgia Supreme Court that upheld the licensing ordinance, almost identical in substance to the one that Brookhaven has. But in your legislative record, these are from the city of Forest Park. One is Dwayne Hobbs, the chief police, the chief of police there, who documented at the Pink Pony South and at another club there, a number of negative secondary effects, including prostitution. The city and of course, that litigation hired private investigators who documented illicit activities at the club, including nude dancers soliciting customers for prostitution, stimulating patrons' genitals through lap dances, putting a breast in patrons' mouths, allowing digital penetration by patrons. So there's ample evidence, this isn't new, but it's not only supportive of the sexually oriented business ordinance, but also the alcohol ordinance. And there was also testimony that the court credited from the former city manager, talking about the inability to attract high-quality development and the sluggish economy that was attractive around those areas. And then you have a number of affidavits closer geographically that are part of the legislative record from Captain Robert Stevens, David Hushmatt, other people in the city of Sandy Springs Police Department. I won't go into detail there. You have a number of studies from across the country, large and small cities, expert reports, some are more anecdotal or just observational reports, they don't involve comparison and control areas or hierarchical regression analysis, but they're the types of evidence that the courts have said that you can rely on. Most recently, there's some affidavits in the case that we litigated in Metropolis, Illinois last year in the federal court against a similar club. In fact, the guy in that Illinois case was the owner of the Memphis Clubs. In fact, the guy in that Illinois case was the owner of the Memphis clubs that lost the case in the Sixth Circuit today. These voluminous secondary effects are made a part of the official record and minutes for this public meeting, as well as for the ordinance. That's before you night on the amendments to the alcohol code. And I think with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Scott? Anybody from council?
Just had one question, kind of had to clear it with you, because I don't want to sabotage you or, you know, sandbag you. But there've been claims that the city's legal fees in this matter could cost in excess of half a million dollars. Do you find that claim reasonable or believable or...
I think that claim is unreasonable, but I think you need to consider two things. Number one is the city addressing its ordinances and having the ordinances that it's drafted. When the complaint was filed, the typical lawsuit for the non-lawyers in the room will proceed this way. Someone files a lawsuit, they engage in a period of discovery for several months, sometimes a couple of years, they do as much discovery as they can, they try to gather facts from the other side about what happened in this employment context or whatever the decision was, and then they later go to summary judgment or a trial. A constitutional case is different. The claim is, your law is unconstitutional, it doesn't meet the legal precedents, it doesn't have legal validity. Well, that's a claim that the city contends, and we would contend, and we do in every case, doesn't require discovery. You don't need to take tons of depositions and go back and forth and all sorts of discovery. Now, so what happened is, when this case was filed in May, the city did, I think, the prudent thing, which is, they filed an answer within the thirty days as they were required, and on the same day that they filed their answer, they filed a motion to dismiss the case, including all the legal claims made therein. That motion, that was filed in June. That motion is set to be heard August first. So at least from the city's perspective, the city is doing everything it can possibly do to bring the case to a judgment, to get a resolution from the court at the earliest possible juncture about the legal rights of the parties, and we feel that the city has a very strong case. Obviously, this is not a half million dollar attorney's fees case. Number two, what you have to do is consider the source of those claims. It's from the people who want to take lots of discovery, drag it on, do open records requests, and basically drive up the cost of providing legal services relative to the lawsuit, and then what they can do is come back and, after being the source of the increased legal fees, argue that, oh, this is costing a lot of money or wasting taxpayers' dollars, you should stop it. Actually, we're working with cities across the country, the more prudent course is to have a constitutionally defensible ordinance, which the city has painstakingly taken efforts to do, instead of inheriting bad ordinances from DeKalb County, like tonight with the alcohol ordinance. They're attempting to fix those, and then to the extent there's a challenge to those, which are like the ordinances in all the cities around here, and in Forest Park, and in Doraville, and in Johns Creek, and so, they're seeking to get legal judgment on those at the earliest possible juncture. So it's kind of a two-part answer to your question, but it's somewhat of a loaded question, and typically, the people that are asking that are the people that would make the legal services and the cost of legal services unnecessarily high. From the city's perspective, it's doing everything it can to get a resolution from the court at the earliest possible juncture and avoid things like discovery that just unnecessarily, at least in cases like this, drive up costs.
Well, I mean, you understand why I asked that question, because, you know, citizens, you know, are concerned about any cost we might incur with anything, whether it's legal fees or whatnot for any activity we undertake. And I think it's relevant to, I think it's relevant to the discussion to, you know, as far as our citizens are concerned, how much in legal fees the city will be paying, and that's why I wanted to ask you if you thought that was a reasonable number or something that you would estimate or not, and that's, you know, because I've been hearing that not just from, you know, the other side, but from citizens as well. They're interested in knowing what this could cost the city and...
And that's a very, and that's a very legitimate consideration, you're public policymakers, and you need to be concerned about the public risk, and what you've talked about with millage rate is directly proportionate to that, but at least from the city's perspective, the goal of the city ought to be and has been in this case, to address these issues in the most efficient manner and the most cost-effective manner possible. That's what this ordinance does tonight. In fact, I was glad to hear Mr. Bellines commend the city and say that they were smarter today than they were yesterday, because this ordinance eliminates a lot of subsections of the alcohol code that aren't really necessary, that are carried over from DeKalb County, and frankly, will moot a number of claims in the lawsuit, which really, when you look at the specifics of the lawsuit, it challenges mostly specifics in the alcohol code, and we're addressing a lot of those and just cleaning it up and doing the prudent thing.
So you're not going to be staying at the St. Regis tonight? You might be staying off at Microtel at the Red Roof anyway?
No, but I did eat at Crystal's before I came.
How many did you eat?
Just one.
Okay, any more discussion or questions?
I just had a question, Ashley.
Scott? Is you want to ask Scott?
I don't know if, Scott, you probably can answer this. It actually has to do under, in this ordinance, I believe it's Section Three, it has to do about qualifications for servers.
Yes.
I know that we had some requests from bar owners that, you know, if you're hiring a young kid who's maybe had a marijuana, or, you know, like a misdemeanor charge in the past, or maybe a past DUI, you mean, on one hand, you want to let the kid get a new start and not be prevented from working. I think this language does it, I'm just, but not being a lawyer, I just want to make sure that on Section F...
Yes.
Can you just kind of put that in plain language for me?
I can. The distinction here is for crimes involving moral interpretive as a misdemeanor. I think that what we had changed was any misdemeanors, and it changed misdemeanors involving, involving moral interpretive, which is something you would want to borrow somebody who, you know, fraud, things involving finance, but I think what the ordinance changed was any misdemeanor.
Well, no, let me, let me, let's read the language, because I think it's pretty clear. F, no license for the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be granted to any person who has been convicted under any federal, state, or local law of any misdemeanor involving moral interpretive within ten years prior to the filing of an application. The term conviction includes an adjudication of guilt or a plea of guilty or no low contender. The term moral interpretive shall include any violation that involves gambling, drugs, or a driving while intoxicated conviction in less than five years from a prior driving while intoxicated conviction, and sale of alcohol with the exception of any violation of certain subsections of the ordinance. In other words, it's more narrowly tailored.
So it's two and five?
If you had a prob, yeah, if you'd had a problem with gambling, drugs, and alcohol, the things that are negative secondary effects, for lack of a better term, associated with bad apple alcohol establishments, you're going to be barred for a limited time period from being licensed to operate, to be, you know, to be, to get a permit.
But if you've had one DUI...
No, it's two.
That's right.
It says, the language reads two.
This requires two within a five-year period.
Says one within, after one within five years previously. So if you had one four years, eleven months ago, and you got another one with that same operating period, that's two. If you had two, you're barred, but one in the five-year period is permissible.
Okay. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Not, not...
Yeah, it's just making sure that the types of, you don't want operators doing certain things. Just like if you hired a bouncer, you wouldn't want someone convicted of aggravated assault.
Right. But you understand that the goal we were trying to achieve here.
Absolutely, and this is much more streamlined than what is in the code today.
Right. Right, we believe in second chances.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion of questions for anybody? All right, any questions for staff? All right. Let me get back to my agenda here, hold on. Okay, all in favor, do we have, we have a motion, right? Do we have a motion? Oh, we're just having a presentation. Okay, is there a motion on the ordinance?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number two thousand thirteen dash oh three dash oh nine, an ordinance to amend Chapter Four, alcoholic beverages of the Code of the City of Brookhaven.
You have to mention his...
Excuse me, before we go out on the motion, my copy has two thousand thirteen dash oh six dash oh nine.
Did I mistake that?
You said oh three dash oh nine?
Yes, oh six.
Okay. Sorry.
Oh my God, now you're making this so difficult.
Well, I'll go ahead and do the first part, and that is, the material that was submitted as part of the record in the minutes for this ordinance, and you can include that in your motion if you want, but I just want to correct the number.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will try this again. I move that we adopt ordinance number two thousand thirteen dash oh six dash oh nine, to amend Chapter Four, alcoholic beverages of the Code of the City of Brookhaven. Do you want me to read the whole thing? And to incorporate the presentation made by Mr. Berthold. And the items he submitted for the record. Any other problems?
Is there a second to that motion as stated by Councilman Williams, Councilwoman Williams?
I second it.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance as stated with the, including incorporating the evidence given by Attorney Berthold? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And currently, in the minutes that this ordinance has passed. All right. Other business? Any other business? None? Public comment? All right, you have a public comment section here. So for any folks out there who want to make a public comment, just fill out the form. Aubrey, you want to come on up again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody got a form from him, I guess?
Yes, sir. I'm a counsel, I'll be fairly brief. Mr. Berthold is very passionate about what he believes, very informed, and I'll say that. We are glad that you corrected, corrected much of what was in there, and there's much more to be corrected, and you'll hear more of that on August the first. On August the first, you shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free. You're going to be in the hands of the Cab Superior Court Judge, not the Sixth Circuit out of Memphis, or not the Eleventh here in federal court. You're going to be in a Superior Court in DeKalb County, and they're going to rule on your motion. We may not hear that day, they may take it under advisement and rule later. We expect to win. We expect at that point that we'll go on to discovery, and one of us will stand in front of you shortly thereafter with a little bit of crow on their face. I don't know which one it will be, but we expect to prevail and go forward. If we happen to lose, then we will simply appeal. We're not exactly sure how much attorney fees it costs. We gave a conservative estimate, based upon what we heard with Sandy Springs and the records we have of four hundred thousand dollars. I think Mr. Berthold was involved in that, he could probably tell you exactly what his fees were, and maybe he could tell you what the other attorney's fees are. They're still going on in Sandy Springs, it's not settled. It's still going on there. As far as Forest Park, we're still there as well. I'm not going to disagree with all his, disagree with his legal analysis, even though I do, but we would ask you to look at what your constituents want. When Forest Park did what they did to the folks down there, the citizens of Forest Park got rid of the entire council and the mayor, because it wasn't what they wanted, and we're not sure that the citizens of Brookhaven, every time I'm here, people get up, I saw it yesterday, that we didn't ask to come here and say, "Why are you messing with a pony? Why are you messing with a pony?" And that's what we ask you to think about. Why are you messing with a pony if we've had no problems? But on August the first, we'll all know something, but it won't be in federal court, it'll be in front of the Cab Superior Court. Thank you very much, as always.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Scott, you can give a public comment if you want. Fill out a form, just so you can, you can say you gave one.
Sure. Yeah, I'll fill out a form, but here's, here's the point on the motion to dismiss. Obviously, this is a motion to terminate the case in the very, at the earliest possible juncture. Okay, there are oftentimes, and typical standard on a motion to dismiss is that the plaintiff can prove no set of facts in which they can prevail under governing law. So it's a very high hurdle, but the fact of the matter is, for purely legal claims, it's an appropriate type of motion, and that's why we brought it, and that's what we're going to argue are appropriate. We've had cases in the Knox County, Richland Bookmark versus Knox County that I just had on the screen. We filed a motion to dismiss with the answer, very early on, the court didn't grant it. They said, well, we're going to try and give the plaintiff a shot to take some discovery and do a motion for summary judgment. So shortly thereafter, there was some discovery that was taken, one or two depositions, maybe, some written discovery, not that unheard of. Of course, you know, in this case, most of those documents have already been disclosed through open records, actual requests, responses that the city's promulgated. But nevertheless, sometimes that happens, and then the court granted summary judgment on, and then the Sixth Circuit upheld the city's ordinance on every claim. So I'm not saying that it's, you know, everything's going to be over on August first, or when the judge issues a decision on the motion dismissed, but nevertheless, we think that the case law, like the Walleye case from the Georgia Court of Appeals last week, bears directly on count one of the complaint in the Pink Pony case, which is an inverse condemnation claim. We think it disposes of that, and I'm not timid to say that, and if there was something in the ordinance, for example, in the alcohol ordinance, that I thought the city ought to fix, I would come here like I did tonight and tell you how to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Sure. Don't be afraid, raise your hand, I'll be once again. All right. Public comment section is closed. Mayor's comments. I want to thank you all for your patience, for all being here. Hopefully, thankfully, it didn't get too hot. Thank you for all the work from staff, thank you for everybody that presented, and please, if you have questions about any of the city is doing, if you get anonymous phone calls or if you get anonymous things in the mail, first of all, consider the fact that it is anonymous. I got a lot of phone calls from folks, again, at the beach, telling me things, and I would say, "Well, who sent you that postcard, or who called you?" Well, you know, they didn't say. Can you find out who they are? Well, I don't know who they are, but so, please treat anonymous information with the value and with the weight that it should be given, which is, if they're doing it anonymously, there's a reason, they don't want to be held accountable for what they're saying. That's the reason people do anonymous things. They don't want to have to face people and have to argue and uphold what they're trying to disseminate. Thank you for, again, for all your patience. Is anybody else on council? I'll see some of my mayor's comments, Tom, anybody on the council that wants to have any thing to say. Jim, I'm sure you got to say something, don't you?
I'm not sure you want to hear what I have to say, but I guess I need to say it anyway. I've heard a lot of comments...
I resent my offer, but...
Okay. I've heard a lot of comments tonight, and I just, it pains me. I'll be the first to admit that other jurisdictions don't do as well as we hope Brookhaven will, but I hope going forward, we spend more time talking about what's good in Brookhaven than what's bad in other jurisdictions. I think that's behind us now, and it's time we move forward and look at what we can do and what we should do, rather than what somebody else hasn't done. So I just, I hope that on future meetings, we just keep, keep it above the board and focus on what we have control over, rather than what others might, might be controlling.
That's, that's good, that's a good comment there, I agree with it. Rebecca, do you have any comments?
I haven't talked out.
Are you? Okay, Joe, do you have anything?
No, I think we said it all.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for, no, wait, executive session, we moved the agenda. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Where is your...